It is now six o'clock PM. I will call this regular meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Culp?
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, you have the reason of casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of May 17th through June 7th of 2022. Border Patrol Agent Daniel Salazar, United States Department of Homeland Security, Customs and Border Protection, end of watch May 17th, 2022. Senior Corrections Officer Daniel Sin Cavage, New Jersey Department of Corrections, New Jersey, end of watch May 19th, 2022. Police Officer Houston Tipping, the Los Angeles Police Department, California, end of watch May 29th, 2022. Officer Adrian Lopez, the White Mountain Apache Tribal Police Department, Tribal Police, end of watch June 3rd, 2022. And finally Deputy Sheriff Thomas E. Baker III, Nicholas County Sheriff's Department, West Virginia, end of watch June 3rd, 2022.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the recognition of guests and presentations. We have a bittersweet one today. Chief Stegelmeyer.
Good evening again, Board. It's with great happiness and a little bit of sadness to inform you this evening, we're here to celebrate the retirement of one of our most tenured employees to date, Leah. I'm sorry to say that, but you're one of the old school people left. I'm here to announce the retirement, opinion of retirement of Leo O'Malley. And before I do that, and before I introduce Leah to you all, I'd like to give you just a short, little bit of bio about Leah and what she's accomplished while being here at the Miami Township Police Department. Leah was hired in 1991, and she began her career as a dispatcher here for the Miami Township Police Department. She continued in that position until 1993, when she left to take a job with the Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the State of Ohio. In 1994, Leah returned to the Miami Township Police Department where she worked in a variety of support roles. She worked to improve technology with computers in the department and in the cruisers. She was instrumental in the implementation of mobile data terminals and video camera systems that we presently are using in our cars. In early 2000, Leah accepted the position of dispatcher supervisor and was tasked with the complete renovation of the Miami Township Police Department Communications Center, including upgrades to the computers, recording system, video system, 911 phone system, and the radio system and consoles. In 2008, you all know that the Miami Township Police Department moved to the Regional Dispatch Center. So with that, Leah's role shifted. She became an integral part of the Police Department, and what she became responsible for is the implementation of a lot of the new computer RMS software that we are using today. It started out with the implementation of the old Tiburon system when with the regional dispatch system. Leah's implementation with that was not only just with the department, but she was instrumental in developing training and manuals that helped train other agencies throughout the county. Pretty impressive, Leah, I must say. After this part in 2012, Leah again was tasked to, I'm sorry, was it 2012 we went to Premier One? 2017. Let me go back to 2012 then, we'll get there. In March of 2012, Leah was named the accreditation manager. And with that, she was tasked with leading our department through the CLIA accreditation process. As you all know, that's a monstrosinal task of making sure that we have all our policy procedures and operating procedures in place in order to gain the national accreditation. And Leah was very instrumental in us achieving that. I think this is the next page, Leah, where we talk about you going, yep, there we go. 2017, the Miami Township Police Department upgraded the RMS software to the Premier One software, which was the system that we used just prior to our recent switch. Again, Leah was tasked with help implementing that into our department, and she was tasked by then to, again, develop a training protocol and manuals for other agencies in the county, which she did with Grace. In January 2022, the Miami Township Police Department left the RDC, Regional Dispatch Center, and we went to the Katerin Emergency Dispatch Center for dispatching service. I again tasked and relied on Leah at every step of this process. She worked feverishly to help every section in our agency to make sure that that transition was smooth and effortless. And for those of you that don't know about changing dispatch centers, it was a year and a half process. She was instrumental not only, again, switching new computer software and training all of us to use that, but things like picking radio frequencies, because we changed radio frequencies, picking cell sites, what is going to help us when we get 911 emergency calls. All these little small details Leah kept in a task for us, so we made sure that that was an effort and smoothless transition. For that, thank you. During her career, Leah has done more than just helped us with RMS and radio dispatching. She has written and managed several state and federal grants for the department. These grants made it possible for the Police Department to purchase equipment, pay for officer overtime, while working safety initiatives in the township. These grants saved the department taxpayers approximately a half a million dollars. Not a bad savings, if I do say so. For the past 25 years, the National Night Out program has been a premier event for the Miami Township Police Department. Since its inception, the department has consistently placed in the top five nationally for the National Night Out program. This has been accomplished primarily through the hard work and coordinating efforts of Leah and Sergeant Jay Ferris. Together, they worked with neighborhood block captains, apartment complexes, and churches to make the Miami Township Police Department's National Night Out program the best in the nation, and we achieved that goal in 2019, thanks to Leah and her efforts. During her 31-year career, Leah has received several department awards. In 2017, she was named the Miami Township Police Department Employee of the Year, and in 2021, I had the privilege of giving Leah the Miami Township Police Department's Matarious Service Award for all her accomplishments here at the Police Department. Leah's been a go-to person here at the Police Department and also a go-to person for me for the past three decades, and her presence we deeply missed. Leah, thank you for all your hard work and loyal service for the past 31 years. Ladies and gentlemen, Leo O'Malley. Now Leah's short on words. She does not, she doesn't like to be put on the spot, and I promised her I wouldn't do this, but everybody that leaves out these doors has got to give us a little talk to the trustees. But before we do, Leah, I'd like to give you a plaque on behalf of the Police Department, and I'd like to read the inscription for everybody, if you don't mind. And it says, "A Retirement Service Award for Leah K. O'Malley. With sincere appreciation for 30 years of service, October 29, 1991 to July 1, 2022, you have earned the respect and admiration of the members of our department and most definitely from me." Again, here you are, Leah, thank you. All right, you have to come up here and speak now. It's your turn.
I can tell I'm getting ready to retire in my glasses. Recently, I've been spending time reflecting on my career and my time working for the department. It's interesting that I didn't spend much time thinking about my accomplishments or workload. I thought about the relationships that have formed over the past 30 years, probably because today is John and I's 25th wedding anniversary. John, thank you for your support and for being an amazing father to our children. Anyone who speaks to me for more than two minutes has certainly heard about our children. Grace and Kate, Grace is here tonight. She is home from Columbus, where she is working as a law clerk with the Ohio Attorney General's Office. She is a second-year law student at the Ohio State University Moritz School of Law. Our youngest daughter Kate is in Spain studying sustainable housing and social justice as part of her study abroad experience with Davidson College, where she will be a senior in the fall. These family relationships are my primary joy in my life and my greatest blessing, and I'm extremely grateful for them. And my mother, and my nephew, and my brother, and my sister-in-law are here, my neighbors, my friends, and all of you, thank you. Other relationships in my career have come from friendships I've made, from people who are in attendance tonight to support me. We have shared laughs, solved problems, and worked together to make Miami Township a better place for everyone. I have friendships that will last a lifetime, and I will treasure your friendship and remember you fondly. If you think I'm talking about you, I'm certain you're correct. Conversely, there have been relationships which have caused me and my family deep pain. I've been lied about, talked about, and deeply hurt. These people I have forgiven, and I will not spend any time thinking about them at all. And if you think that I'm talking about you, you're probably correct. I treasure the relationship I have made with the community through National Night Out. Some of the Black captains have hosted parties for 25 years or more. I've watched children in these neighborhoods grow up and meet people, met people who have become friends. I value the relationships I made with friends from other law enforcement agencies, who helped me with CLIA, who helped me on software upgrades, who taught me about MDTs and video systems. I've made so many friendships with a diverse group of people, and I am very thankful. But there is one relationship which has sustained me throughout my career, one person who was constant and true for 30 years. I'd like to thank Sergeant Jay Ferris for his sincere friendship and support. For the younger officers in attendance, I have just one piece of advice. Find a real friendship early in your career and sustain and work on that friendship. Okay, actually, I have two pieces of advice. Get to know Sergeant Jay Ferris and learn from him. Pay attention to his strong work ethic, to his character, to his dignity, to his intelligence, and his kindness. Apply these characters to your own life. He is a true friend, a police officer of great integrity, and a man I am proud to call my best friend. I'd like to thank Chief Stegelmeyer and especially Assistant Chief John McGill. Thank you for your friendship. I've enjoyed laughing with you and talking with you about the importance of family. My career and this long speech are over. It's time for me to move on to the next adventure. I'll keep you in my heart. I'll pray for your safety. I'll remember the laughs and Taco Tuesdays I shall return. I'll forgive the hurts, and I'll take pride in my many accomplishments. Thank you.
Is now when we get to vote no?
You ask this every time. I want to thank you for your speech and your service. That was, certainly gave us a great impact and insight into your life. This time, we will excuse the members of the Retirement Party and Chief Stegelmeyer to, for freshmen downstairs.
I gotta ask.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. I will make a motion, we approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Next item is New Business. First item is Resolution Number 45-2022, a resolution to authorize salary adjustments for non-union employees. Mr. McCord?
Good evening, Board. Yes, Resolution 45 is the annual salary adjustment that we have historically brought to you for consideration to keep the non-union staff in somewhat on the same trajectory as the unionized staff. It's for the 3% that was budgeted in the appropriation budget that was approved back in December for all of 2022. Be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions for Mr. McCord?
My only question is, we've seen this resolution four or five years. I always wonder why it's always backdated to a month prior to the meeting that we're in, and why it's not brought to us with, maybe it happens two weeks from now? It just seems a little odd that every time we're authorizing this, it's backdated for a month ago. So I don't know if there's any reason for that.
The rationale for that was to wait until the first half apportionment settlement happened, and that's usually in the last part of April, and also to look at what our health care renewal is going to look like to make sure that we've got the proper funds and ability to do what we had budgeted for. We had originally, historically, we would do these at the beginning of the year, and it was kind of a blind spot. We didn't know what we were going to be able to do, as clearly, so we moved it, and this, the May, the beginning of May was where we kind of settled to kind of bridge that gap.
Any other questions? Next item is Resolution Number 46-2022, a resolution to enter into a contract for health insurance. Mr. McCord?
Good evening, Board, again. This is the renewal proposal that we received from United Healthcare, and we discussed at a previous meeting. It's for a straight renewal of the current program that we have right now, that we've had since July 1st of last year. Calls for a 7% across-the-board rate increase. We did shop for competitive offers and found the 7% to be in line. The trade-off was, we didn't get quite the lowest. We had about a 6% increase from another provider, but it was a smaller network. So after reviewing the contents and the changes that were going to be coming up, we felt like that the 7% was reasonable, and so we brought forth the recommendation for your consideration to renew the existing health care plans for a 7% increase as stipulated in the resolution.
Any questions? Moving on to Resolution Number 47-2022, a resolution to authorize the funding of employer health savings account contributions. Mr. McCord?
And this is a tandem piece of legislation to go along with the health care resolution. For 2022, 23, we're again proposing the high deductible medical plan, which allows for the health savings, health saving account option, and the, we had budgeted a continuation of the practice of $2,000 as an employer contribution to each employee's account, and up to $4,000 if it was for an employee plus, which would be employee child, employee family, or employee spouse option plan that may be selected. Once those selections are finalized and the changes as we go through open enrollment, those funds would be deposited late July, early August, if approved.
Any questions? Lastly, Mr. McCord, you have a motion to authorize the Township Administrator to execute an agreement to offer employee-paid dental coverage through Dental Care Plus for the planned year, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
That is correct, sir. That was, this is an employee-paid benefit. The Township doesn't expend any money on it, but we felt it would be prudent to at least authorize the Township Administrator to enter into the agreement so that we could offer it to the employees. It was about a 25%, if I recall the exact number, reduction in their current premium cost. We did survey the employees just to make sure that the network was compatible for the majority of those participants, and it's one of those, it's going to be a change, but it should hopefully be a positive change. We did get a two-year rate commitment from Dental Care, but if we find that's not acceptable, we can always revisit that every year, like we do.
Any questions? Moving forward, a motion for a liquor permit for another Broken Egg Cafe of Austin Landing LLC at 34 Rigby Road. Administrator Hess?
Mr. President, Department of Liquor Control sent this transfer of a liquor permit from ABE Austin Landing LLC, and is transferring it to another Broken Egg Cafe of Austin Landing LLC. It's the same permit, same classifications, so, and we find, or the Police Department finds no reason to deny this transfer.
Any questions? Moving forward, Resolution Number 48-2022, a resolution to declare surplus property and authorize the sale of said property. Administrator Hess?
Yes, the Police Department has several, has two vehicles that are previously used as patrol vehicles. One has 158,000 miles on it, another one has 152,000 miles on. Those vehicles have been replaced. The rest of the items are items either seized in a search warrant and/or items that were unclaimed, and court orders have been obtained to turn them over to the possession of the Police Department. The Police Department's asking permission to put these on gov deals and sell them.
Any questions? Resolution Number 49-2022, a resolution to appoint a Public Works Director. Mr. Hess?
As you're aware, Mr. Mebury retired earlier this month after 31 years of service with the Township. Process was completed, where I believe there were six candidates that had applied, two were internal. Through the process of the interview, Mr. John Schweickert was earmarked to be the next Public Works Director. So the, we are coming to the Board to appoint John as this position. Mr. Morris was on this interview panel. Do you have anything you want to add in reference to that interview?
We had a number of fine candidates, but Mr. Schweickert stood out from all the rest, and I think he'll do a wonderful job as our Public Works Director.
Despite the fact he's not here today.
He's allowed to vacation.
Resolution Number 50-2022, a resolution to appoint a Community Development Director. Administrator Hess?
As you're aware, Mr. Snyder, who was the Community Development Director, was, made the, or Assistant Township Administrator back on June 1, 2021. Recently, we advertised for candidates for this position during the interview process, which also included Mr. Morris. Mr. Carlson, our current Deputy Director, was earmarked to be the next developer, Development Director, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Morris for any comments about that interview process.
Mr. Carlson did a wonderful job of explaining his vision for the Township, has a tremendous amount of experience, and I believe will do a wonderful job in the new position.
Any other questions? Resolution Number 51-2022 is a resolution to create a new position of Economic Development Specialist. Mr. Carlson?
Good evening, Board. Pending your decision on the previous resolution mentioned by Administrator Hess, the Deputy Director of Community Development position would be left vacant. After staff discussion, there was a decision that the preferred course of action would be to immediately leave the Deputy Director of Development position vacant rather than immediately filling it, and instead, through a department role restructuring, create an Economic Development Specialist position. I've provided you a full copy of the position description and pay scale for your consideration, but just a quick highlight of the position. The Economic Development Specialist would be responsible for establishing and monitoring economic development programs and policies within the township. This role would be dedicated to pursuing grant funding for community projects, maintaining records and contacts of businesses within the township to support business retention, and monitoring township economic development tools, ARJAS, TIFs, Enterprise Zones, et cetera. So the goal of this position would be to focus in a single position all of the economic development efforts of the township, to ultimately report to the Community Development Director and the Board of Trustees. If you have any questions about the position, I'd be happy to answer. The proposed pay scale that was provided on the job description would have incorporated the COLA that would be considered by the Board tonight, so that would not be, again, adjusted after that. But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Lastly, in the New Business, Resolution Number 52-2022, a resolution to adopt electric power and natural gas plans of operation and governance, and to authorize application for certificate as an energy aggregation. Assistant Administrator Snyder?
Good evening, Board. As you're aware, we have held the two required public hearings now for the operation and governance plans for the electric power and natural gas aggregation plans or programs. We, pending your approval, we would send those along with the applications for certification as an aggregator to the PUCO. It's approximately a 30-day wait once they receive those to issue our certification, at which time then we could go out to bid for electric power and natural gas supplies. Once we receive those bids back, then you would have an opportunity to review those and decide if you wanted to move forward with both, or either one individually, or to wait until later date if those bids do not come back at an acceptable price. Obviously, we'll have to review what the market is doing at that time, so. You've got quite a bit of information in your packet. I did note that we requested a modification to the management agreement with Treble to address an item that is in the application on the affidavit, requiring the applicant to cover the cost of assessments. It's our understanding those assessments just amount to a couple of hundred dollars, but Treble has provided us with a copy of a revised agreement that can be amended and executed by Mr. Hess that would address those assessments being covered by Treble Energy. So with that, if you have any questions?
Any questions? I'd just like to comment, we did have two public hearings and did have resident participation, at least attendance at both hearings, and we were informed by the representative from the contractor that the residents have been contacting their office, interested in this process, and we'll bring it forward shortly for a vote. Anything else in the New Business? Public comments? Anyone wishing to speak? No one coming forward. We'll now move to consideration of resolutions and motions. I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 45-2022, a resolution to authorize salary adjustments for non-union employees. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 46-2022, a resolution to enter into a contract for health insurance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a resolution that we adopt, make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 47-2022, a resolution to authorize the funding of employer health savings account, HSA contributions. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 48-2022, a resolution to declare surplus property and authorize the sale of said property.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve, authorize the Township Administrator to execute an agreement to offer employee-paid dental coverage through Dental Care Plus for the planned year, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor permit from another Broken Egg Cafe of Austin Landing LLC at 3450 Rigby Road. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 49-2022, a resolution to appoint a Public Works Director, Mr. John Schweickert.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 50-2022, a resolution to appoint a Community Development Director. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 51-2022, a resolution to create an Economic Development Specialist position.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 52-2022, a resolution to adopt electric power and natural gas plans of operation and governance, and to authorize application for certificate as an energy aggregation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
We'll now move into the public hearing portion of the meeting. I make a motion that we open the public hearing for zoning case number 454-22. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Zoning case number 454-22 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, the applicant will give a presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers, and each speaker should give their name and address for the record. The Board will now, will review them and record the findings of fact requirements for this case. The Board will then close the public hearing and make the final determination on the The board will then close the public hearing and make the final determination on the findings of fact, and the board will make a motion on the resolution concerning this case. The board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Will you review your report at this time?
Thank you, Board. For zoning case number 454-22, it's a request for rezoning of 3.9 acres from B2 Business District to an SP PUD, Special Purpose Plan Development District for the purpose of using the lot to future our dealership and allowing the short-term use of the lot for accessory use to neighboring Walker dealership. The zoning commission recommended that they attend the meeting with stipulations and 40 votes. I'll give a quick overview of the property itself and the recommendations of that commission. The property, Zon B2, is located adjacent to the existing Walker dealership, Zon B5. The property is just south of Lines Road, west of State Route 741, which is between State 75. Side view to show the property lines of the person to be rezoned, adjacent to the existing dealership. Just a base level plan, the initial development plan proposed as part of the use. Summary again, the property in the short term will use the property for accessory use, using the existing hood on outpost garage, center building, removing the older more dated structures. The goal of, in the long term, submitting a final development plan to create some type of automotive or motorized vehicle sales, as we mentioned as part of the final conditions. But looking at the site in larger point of view, zoning commission recommended several stipulations related to the future use, increasing the intensity from a less intense B2 use to a more intense use like a auto dealership. So the summary of stipulations would be forward related to the existing access points on Lines Road. Existing access to the Walker property, existing access to the hood on outpost, where there are separate access points today. In discussions with government engineers' offices, the preference would be to have a single access point to Lines Road that would utilize the left turn lane on Lines Road. The existing access point, the easternmost access, does not have access to the left turn lane, has line, sideline visibility issues to the interstate. Left access has sideline visibility issues to the bridge and the bike path, so again, creating a single access point is the preference of whatever kind of engineer's office. It's back to stipulations.
Can you clarify, can you clarify what that means, single access point? So you talked about the danger of turning left out of the lot from either position.
It's turning left out of the lot, but also turning left into the lot. So heading west down on Lines Road into the existing Walker lot, there is no left turn lane there.
Right.
So we're stacking existing group line, causing a backup out to the intersections. Cat engineers' preference would be to have that access be further west to allow the left turn in, then sort of centering it so that the left turn out is the center point away from the intersection and away from the bridge, so there are sideline issues, sort of access points in there.
So the left turn out will still be permitted? It'll just be re-engineered?
Exactly.
Thank you.
So one of the stipulations from the zoning commission would be to have a site access plan for carousels, meet the recommendation of the engineers' office, provide implementation of permitted use listed in building standards before the final development plan was approved. So all that to say, in discussion with the applicant, there are bits of questions about how these stipulations would play into the existing property ownership. Mr. Scott Stone is here, I'm sure he'll have to address that further, but the applicant has requested continuation of this case, which will allow the meeting to allow time for its client to discuss these stipulations in relation to ownership of its properties. So with that, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Board will now hear from the applicant.
My name is Scott Stone. My address is 7501, par. 1, 805458. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Mr. Carlson, I had some conversations today, and I related to him that my client raised a few issues that we just need to have some more time to resolve, and I requested to put an email to Mr. Carlson that we cable this to the July 5 meeting, and I think that should give us sufficient time to iron out any question my client has. That would be my request this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I'll make a motion to continue zoning case number 454-22 to the board of trustees meeting scheduled for July 5, 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
This time, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case number 454.
Nope.
We'll leave the public hearing open.
Leaving it open.
Continuing the public hearings next meeting.
Thank you for correcting me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We would have voted no anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate it. She just let me get through it and then said, "No way, sir." All right. We're moving on to, excuse me. Moving on to zoning case number 453-2022, I'll make a motion to open zoning case number 453-22.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case number 453-22 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, applicant will give a presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers, and the speakers will need to give their name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission, and would you please review your report at this time?
I do have a report. Same case number 453-22, it's a request for a final development plan of the Vivo Multi-Family Development. Currently on this slide, previously was the Hawthorne Suites at St. State Hotel. Rezoning was approved. Last one's meeting by the board of trustees to allow this conversion use. The applicant was then required to come forward with a final development plan stating what exterior modifications there today went to the property. Again, the property is located west of 741. It is now Zon SP PUD, largely surrounded by B4 properties, St. Lines Road to the north and I75 to the west. Sort of side view of the property. It's surrounded. It's an aerial drone photograph of the property. So the applicant's plan brought forward, I think so gentleman, largely left the property undisturbed. The property had a relatively substantial landscape plan existed. Much of the existing building material was in good shape. Presenting a plan to paint and refresh the buildings, largely if your architecture affected, otherwise cleaning up trash and refuse around the property. Largest items were related to fencing along the property, some additional landscape we'll get to in a moment, and cleaning up the existing dumpster enclosure from the property. So first, zoning commission recommended, in purple and 40 votes, stipulations. For one, the applicant must provide details for all site fence, even the material and requirements would be under development standards. The applicant must provide updated dumpster enclosure, utilize brick material, set it to consist of brick on the structure. The applicant must approve the western line, the main base of plants, maybe native evergreen trees, a state park on center while incorporating existing quality trees and plants. The applicant must replace existing fence on the western property line. The fence must match the north fence. Though if it's not perfectly fenced, repairs must be made if necessary. So the applicant let me know today that they would not be able to attend the meeting. The bits in the email stating that they were fully able to comply with all of these stipulations, all events from their absence, but would be more than happy to provide these items prior to the zone, which would be at the staff level, heading forward. So yeah, just quickly flip through initially they presented wood dumpster enclosure required brick per codes. There was an existing non-conforming sign on site. It was a stipulation, approval for rezoning of our year moved, parish should have found a development plan initially approved or proposed a chain link fence with vinyl slating in it. This is not approved under these other development standards, so instead they are stated that they will provide a wood fence that would be of residential character. They would also surround all existing air issue units, none of the candles with the fencing to perfect appearance of property. And they would line the entire north property line, it's on the right side of the image, between their property and the Kettering Office Building with a fence to separate that property to hopefully dissuade residents from using the Kettering parking lot for the Hawthorne Suites in the west of the Kettering Office Building, and they were happy to promote that fence. Just as a quick idea of the color, currently it's sort of a taller earth tone, you're trying to refresh that, so powder colors, greenstone type colors, silver, something along the way, just an idea of what they're suggesting of the paint. So again, here the recommendations of the commission generally, there's a lot of interior work, exterior work is relatively minimal. The interior work, they are refreshing property, creating that fence line as well as putting relatively substantial landscaping, log, the west fence line between the property and the interstate to provide additional buffer for the interior. Any questions?
Board will now hear from the applicant, all proponents, and all opponents of the proposed zoning case. Hearing none, I make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case number 453-22. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we adopt what I believe is resolution number 52-2022, a resolution to adopt a final development plan for the Vivo Plan Development under zoning case number 453-22 for land-zoned SP PUD, Special Purpose Planned Unit Development District. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves a final development plan for the Vivo Plan Development under zoning case number 453-22 and adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Department head comments, any department heads wishing to speak?
I have a couple of comments. Go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Snyder.
Well, I just wanted to start off by congratulating Mr. Schweickert and Mr. Carlson on their appointments tonight, also participated in the interview process, and trust that they did an excellent job from my intention to continue to work to find their new roles. I also wanted to mention, you may have seen in the DAB news, texted, or come into to work with on Instagram, apparently also have been getting some funds from jobs up high. They made an announcement there, going to definitely run additional jobs to the Miami Township's self-schmucking operation. See that project?
I also want to thank John and Alex and congratulate them, it just shows the dedicated employees that work for the township, and I have no doubt they'll continue to work. One other note, the traffic calming flashing signs came in and were installed about a week ago on Beano Parkway. We're in the middle of another speed study to see the effect of those.
Thank you.
Really quick, considering this is my first opportunity to make a department head comment, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board of trustees and the township administration for this opportunity to serve Miami Township in this capacity. For the past five years, I've worked with this township's exemplary staff, and I look forward to continuing that in this capacity. Thank you, Board.
Don't screw it up.
Mr. Carlson, that was an excellent speech, and then Mr. Morris had to end it terribly. I'm going to rag on him all day today. All right. Elected official comments, Mr. Newell.
I have none.
Mr. Culp.
I have none.
Mr. Morris.
Earlier in the meeting, we approved across-the-board 3.5% increase. I just want to make sure the public understands that that increase in non-union staff was budgeted, what was approved was within the budget, but I'd like to challenge the administration to look into. I read that Westchester Township a number of years ago approved a merit pay system rather than across-the-board increases, so I'd like to investigate how that works and how that might be different, and something we might want to consider here.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. That was a 3% raise we approved earlier today.
Was it 3?
Yeah. I appreciate the comments that you're raising. I also appreciate the efforts made by our finance department to make sure that that raise is in line with the budget and the expected increase in health insurance before it comes before us. I'd just like to make a comment that since our last board of trustees meeting, there have been a number of high-profile mass shootings in the United States, and as I've said in other large social events, I don't believe that doing nothing is the answer, and I would call on our elected federal and state officials to work on the problem of reducing these. As township trustees, we have very limited ability to actually intervene in these types of large-scale issues, and I think it's something that, to say that to do nothing is not worthwhile, but something thoughtful needs to be done. We have no work session. At this point, we have two executive sessions. I will make a motion that we adjourn into executive session, both for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
We will be adjoining into both executive sessions. We will conduct no further public work, and we will be adjourning the meeting from the executive session.